Good will kids, let's bow our heads for a moment and let you realize how thankful we are for being here tonight in this wonderful place. Thank you, and officially say welcome to all of you this evening. And we've got a lot of smile faces in here tonight because you know Sam Paul is coming. And we know that all of you have been good, except for a couple of you. And we know who you are. Sam Paul is over here. All right, if we can, let's stand and pledge allegiance to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we're getting organized to begin, those of you that may not be aware, in the back of the room, in that corner, to the table, there's all kinds of paperwork that reflect what we're going to be addressing tonight, and help yourself with a copy of the agenda and supporting documents for the agenda items. And thank you for being here tonight. We are on item number four on the agenda, and that number four item is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve the agendas?
Second.
Second. Any discussion here, none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Number five is consideration of approval of the minutes. Since we've got a long agenda, I'm going to ask you to consider to make a motion for approval of all three, A, B, and C.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no, unanimous, thank you. Comments on agenda items is the sixth item on the agenda, and we have one person that signed up, Mr. Tom Myers. If you can, sir, will approach the microphone, give us your name and where you live, and speak your mind on the agenda items you signed up for, and those of you that may not be aware, there's an opportunity later on in the program where you can speak about anything that you want to talk about. But right now, it's only agenda items, and Myers is the speaker.
Okay, my name is Tom Myers. I live at 301 Ocean Boulevard West. I'm the president of the Holden Beach Property Owners Association, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the HBPOA regarding agenda items fourteen and fifteen, solid waste, and rollback service. The mission of the HBPOA is to represent the property owners of Holden Beach regarding their common issues and concerns. Trash service is one of these issues since it impacts 100 percent of the property owners on the island. Based on our most recent analysis, eighty-nine percent of property owners do not live here full-time, and thirty percent of those property owners don't even live in the state of North Carolina. More than half of the property owners do not rent their properties, and those that do it's predominantly seasonal rental. In general, property owners are concerned about the additional burdens that might be placed on them, and the fact that they incur severe penalties and possibly even criminal violations for things that are out of their control. They feel they pay property taxes and are therefore entitled to town services, including trash pickup, and that the town needs to consider the unique demographics of the island. There are neighborhoods here that have a concentration of permanent residents who all know each other and can help each other out. However, the majority of the island, especially on Ocean Boulevard, has a high percentage of non-resident owners who don't always know each other. Most of these property owners come here rarely and randomly, and they're not always on the weekends. When they come, they generate trash, they typically roll their cans to the street before heading back home. If they live on Ocean Boulevard, the town's been rolling the empty cans back for them. If they don't, when they live on another street, they're at the mercy of someone else rolling their can back, or else it stays there until their next visit, which could be days, weeks, or months later. If a full can is rolled back, it could sit at their house for days, weeks, and months. These property owners are being turned into villains and viewed as people who deserve to be criminally punished. In reality, their actions are simply due to the situation. Their only crime is not being here full-time. The HBPOA periodically conducts opinion surveys. We did one on recycling, but we haven't had time to do one on trash rollout or rollback services. We've tried to communicate the information about this proposed ordinance, and we've received a lot of feedback, much of it which has been forwarded to you. However, collecting feedback takes time, and it's impossible to get any feedback on any decisions that were made this morning before you vote on implementing them this evening, especially given the timing of a Tuesday one week before Christmas. HBPOA is willing to help you communicate your expectations to property owners, provide them with the information they'll need to comply with the ordinance. We just hope that it's something everybody is capable of doing, and that you're being fair to the non-resident property owners who represent the vast majority of our task base. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Number seven. We're very fortunate tonight to have the Land Calipane membership here with us, Mr. Ward. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Hewitt and Heather for helping set this up. I think I came to Holden Beach earlier this spring and sat down with the town manager, Mr. Hewitt, to talk about what ATMC plans to do in 2019. Fast forward a couple of months, we've got a hurricane that has set back our timeline. I'm sure it's set back many folks in here's timeline as well. So we want to announce some good news tonight and make sure that everybody's well informed, and if they have questions going forward on how to get that information from ATMC. My name is Chris Ward. I'm the business development manager at ATMC, and I'm here to announce our fiber optics project, hopefully to start in the first quarter of 2019. Some information about this project is estimated at five and a half million dollars. All that's coming from the cooperative. It's not going to be charged for any installation or any construction on the island. Make internet speeds available after the fiber optics are laid in the ground, up to one gig. Now, I say that now, we already offer ten gig services to customers like the hospital in Brunswick County, AT&T, nine-one-one center, and some other folks. So there's a lot faster capability when we talk about fiber optics, but that's currently what we're selling to our residential and business customers in a regular fiber to the home or fiber to the business project like we're talking about on Holden Beach. We're going to share the map, and we'll see that in just a second when I'll go over all that, but there's thirteen phases listed. Two of those phases are 1A, and Phase One, that's the call way. So as phases are completed, meaning as we get one or two or three phases completed, we'll be able to offer service. We don't have to have service available to all thirteen phases or construction completed before we can offer service. As soon as we have crews that wrap up either Oak Island or Ocean Isle Beach, they'll be moving to Holden Beach, like I said, the first quarter. We're anticipating sometime in January, first of February, and that may be sooner. Obviously, it depends on work in those two areas and the weather. And construction should take about nine to twelve months. This is the map. Like I said, there's not a lot of detail. You guys can see I left all the commissioners and the staff here with a copy of that, and that map's also going to be available online, and we'll talk about that, too. Some of the benefits for Holden Beach. ATMC's pretty much served Holden Beach since the inception of anybody needing telephone service. Those copper lines have been in the ground out there fifty years, forty-five years. Who ever had the first telephone service here? Everybody knows what the beach air does to metal that's exposed. You can imagine what it does to metal that's underground. So it's been pastime, actually, to get rid of that copper and move up to a more state-of-the-art network, and that's what we're going to do with fiber optics. Fiber optics are just glass. We have a laser on one end at our office that shoots a laser to the door or the office of the business or the residence that takes that light and turns it into signal for phone, cable, internet service. So when we do that, we're talking about the same type of service. Towns and cities all across the country have been begging Google and other people to come in and put fiber optics in their areas, and giving them a lot of tax incentives, tax breaks, and in some cases, pretty much paying them to come do these things. We're going to do this in Holden Beach next year and make Holden Beach just as important as Raleigh, Durham, Charlotte, or any other market that has fiber optic service. One thing you talk about when we talk about benefits for Holden Beach, whether customers take ATMC service or our competitors, it will make our competitor's service better. Anytime you offer a better service than the market, prices drop and competition rises. So we've seen that Holden Beach or seen that at Ocean Isle Beach and Oak Island Beach. Anytime we do a fiber to the home project, whether you use our service or not, it makes everybody a little more ready to respond when you have issues. Benefits for business, we talked about faster service, more reliability, obviously, because we're not dealing with metal, we're dealing with glass, increased efficiency. I know a lot of people in this room probably have businesses and do a lot of different things on Holden Beach, especially during the summertime, so when you have faster internet, you can do more internet-based services, like taking credit cards and payments and do things online. And then it's obviously service from a company that you guys know and hopefully a company that you guys trust with ATMC being a provider for the last six years in Brunswick County. Benefits for homeowners, and that slide there is actually straight from the Wall Street Journal, and it's about two years old, bro, so it's probably a little bit more than that. The homeowner increase home value. Like I said, this was a study that was actually released July 4th, 2016, in the Wall Street Journal. Anybody that has access to fiber optic internet, their home is automatically going to be more valuable than if folks that have slower or doesn't have access to speeds that we can provide over fiber optics. So greater bandwidth, more connected devices. I don't know about you, but when we first walked in, I think the town's lawyer was talking about connecting to the Wi-Fi. Anytime you get twenty or thirty people renting a beach house, they're all going to want to use Wi-Fi, they're going to look at their cell phones or look at their Netflix accounts. So the folks that own these houses and rent these houses will have better internet and more reliability to do those things. And like I said, it gives people more options. The more options you have, the better service you're going to get, whether that's from us or our competitors. One very important thing, anybody remembers tonight, go to our website, Iwantatmc.com. There's a dropdown. You can just select Holden Beach, you'll see all the other areas we're doing fiber to the home. The Holden Beach was just added live there today. You can see a copy of the map. You can also see videos that will talk explicitly about the type of construction processes we use. They'll talk about what to do if there's issues. It'll have an eight-hundred number as well as an email address if you want to report problems. And I'm sure before this project starts, we'll have some type of pre-construction meeting with David and then everyone else here at the town to make sure we're all on the same page when that gets going. Right now, like I said, as soon as we can get done with either Ocean Isle or Oak Island, we'll start sending crews over here to get going on Holden Beach. Thank you for your time, and I reckon at this point, does anybody have any questions, if that's allowable, Mary?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I see the phases. Is the goal line by phase, or is it at the end of the nine?
It'll be by phase. People in Phase One will be able to get services as soon as we connect Phase One. You won't have to go all the way through all thirteen.
And then by phase?
Yes, sir. And those phases, even though they're sequential numerically, it doesn't necessarily mean when we come out here and may encounter issues that are unforeseen, that Phase Thirteen may get serviced before Phase Eleven. I know that doesn't sound like it would be correct, but we have found that when you start building in some areas, sometimes numbers are just a way for engineers to keep track of stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Merry Christmas and thanks for having me.
I have a question. I'm sure the fact that you went to Ocean Isle and Oak Island first is not reflective of your feeling of us being any less important and loved.
No, sir. I was just mentioning earlier, your town hall was a beautiful town hall I've been in in the last two years, and I've had to do Oak Island and Ocean Isle Beach. No, it's really about the different construction phases, and it's about time, and it's got nothing to do with fiber.
Well, I'm excited to hear about this because I remember as a kid how exciting it was to get my family's first telephone here. And I can all, I remember it's Plaza something six-one-four-one, but that was a long time ago.
Yes, sir, and things have changed quite a bit, but I'm sure that's, that mine is still the same.
You're going to have a great day.
Yes, sir. We're going to make her the, we love those sentiments, but you know, just like we do at the time, to upgrade some things, and that's what we hope to do, is give everyone a better access to communication services in Holden Beach.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you. Heather, do you need this thing?
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we're on number eight. We're going to talk about the mayor pro town position, and who's going to address that?
I can. The ordinance asks that you nominate one each year in the beginning of, well, at December, so we can vote out loud, or if you guys want to vote by ballot, you could just, we could do it that way, and we can put it on paper, and you just need to make sure to sign it for me. So it's whatever the board's pleasure is.
So how do you want to do the nomination and then vote, or how it's going to?
It's completely up to you. That might be, I mean, if you just want to write a name down and I could tally it, or if you want to nominate first, there's really no guidelines on how we.
I, I mean, I would propose that Mike Sullivan simply continue as the mayor pro town for a second year.
Sound a motion.
That's a motion. I move that we nominate Mayor Pro Town Sullivan to continue as Mayor Pro Town in a second year.
Is there a second? Mike, do you get the votes, sir?
That's okay.
Remember the hot thing, Charlie. All right, motion down, for lack of a second. All right, anything else?
So we haven't decided. Are we nominating by voice, I guess?
Well, that, Heather offered that as an option, so it's an option to nominate by voice.
Okay, I'll continue that. I nominate John Fletcher as mayor pro town.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any more nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, motion say aye. Those to as?
Yay.
All right, I guess that's three to you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, John.
We failed to ask if we wanted to have a little discussion.
Okay, you want to have any discussion? My mistake. Go back up, and we will get back in order. I apologize to the group and to you individuals.
That's fine. I would just like to point out that for the folks that are sitting here and have come to the meetings regularly, there's a clear divide on how we vote on the issues and how we discuss these issues. And this vote, although the position's really more ceremonial than it has any authority, will place all three positions beyond the regular authority of the commissioners in the hands of the three people who ran together in the last election. And I just want to point that out so that everybody understands that all power beyond this board of commissioners meeting now rests in the hands of three people who have had voted the same way on every single issue since they came on this court.
I have a comment. Those, there's two, two things that are factually incorrect. There were four people that ran together, so not three, and the three that you referred to have not voted the same on every, on every item.
Tell me one issue where you did not vote as a pro.
I don't have that. I know the rest are, nobody's issue.
It's not, it's not really important.
One is, one is the fence on the bridge.
Yes, because she thought that that would encourage people walking across the bridge. I didn't, I didn't, didn't want to bring that up, but let's, let's, we can, we can move on. We can vote now. I just wanted to make that point. And I think the people in the audience understand the point I was making.
Okay, do we want to get back in order and re-vote?
Yeah.
So. Oh, you're in. Okay, you, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was, I was corrected. I was out of order and been corrected, so we'll start all over again. We had a motion and a second for Mr. Fletcher, nomination. We've now had discussion.
May I make one point? I'm sorry, but I.
Sure.
When we came into office last year, I was told that the mayor pro town position generally goes to the commissioner who received the most votes, which is why I was proposing that it was appropriate for Mayor Pro Town Sullivan to continue. I would simply like to note that if that is no longer going to be the case, that when we come up for reelection next year, those who run, that it does not be considered that the person who gets the most votes automatically becomes the mayor pro town.
I'll make a comment. If you, if you look at the backup material, it's thirty dot oh-five is by election, and that's been done.
I know what the discussion was last year.
Excuse me, that's been done before. It was done, I guess, ten years ago, when the, it was voted that John Fletcher, for the second year that, that I was in, was voted as mayor pro town, and Ashley Royal, Commissioner Royal, was the top voter who did the first year. We voted John Fletcher the second, and we're just going by the rules.
Well, I, I like to present the rest, since I've been here since the town was formed in nineteen sixty-nine. It is not mandatory. Top voter, get it, it was more of an honorary type thing. So that's the truth of the matter. Are we ready to vote now?
Well, I just want to make a comment that I made was that the, when I looked at, when I looked at this subject and I looked at the backup material, I saw that the ordinance, the code of origin, said the normal term of office of vote is mayor pro town, and the executive secretary shall be one year. I just wanted everybody to know that.
All right.
Everybody's made a comment. I've got one. It may have, it may have been perceived, and has been, that the highest voter getter got it. I nominated Mike Sullivan to be the mayor pro town a year ago. It wasn't because he won the most votes. I thought he would be the best mayor pro town for us. An attorney, a former police officer, I thought he's got status, he's professional, I'd make a good mayor pro town. I had been one before, and I said I'd be happy to have him do that, and we did. And that wasn't because he got the most votes.
I'll try again. Are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Three to, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, John.
Thank you, sir.
Are we on number nine?
I think we need to nominate the.
Kind of mayor.
Okay.
Number nine.
All right, we're going to try again. All right, we're on number nine, I think, and we're going to consider electing someone as the executive secretary. Madam Clerk, are you going to hammer that?
It's the same as the mayor pro town. It's up again for consideration in December, so we can vote out loud, or we could do it by paper, whatever the board chooses.
I think voting out loud was so much fun. I'll do it again. And I nominate Commissioner Quiet House for the position of secretary.
Is there a second? Motion down, is there another nomination?
I nominate Peter Feer. He's done a great job, and I know he'll continue to do a great job in that position.
I agree with that. I'll second that. I agree, he's done a good job, and he should continue it.
All righty, any more nominations, if you can? All right, all in favor of the motion, vote.
Discussion.
I'm trying to slide it, buddy. All right, discussion.
Well, I would just say that I shouldn't be surprised by the variances that go on here, but I thought I heard two minutes ago that the reason that I no longer should be the mayor pro town is because I served a year. Peter has served as the secretary for at least two, if not three, years. So if I was to use the same logic, I would say he should be replaced, and another person should take that position. So I would just say, it seems to reinforce what I said five minutes ago about it's just another instance of people wanting to get their way without really using logic or a good explanation for it.
Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yep, yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no.
No.
It's three to, Madam Clerk. If you would record the names as they voted.
Yes, sir.
All right. On number ten. We're very pleased to hear Mr. Hewitt talk about, how you were talking about ATMC doc and straightforward the bridge.
Yes, sir, we actually have guests from DOT tonight. Chad Kimes, Kevin Bowen, and Anthony Law are here tonight to discuss the bridge rehabilitation options.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So to go back to some comments from there, I said earlier, I live in Surf City, but I wish I lived here.
We could organize that.
Okay, so I'm going to try to make this quick and painless tonight. I believe we said we came back here in August and decided on the type of railing. Since then, we've come up with another idea. The same idea was presented to Ocean Isle Beach, but we want to come back here and just show you what that other option looked like. So I'm just going to get to it pretty quick. The, there's a scope of the work of the project, and this is information we have shown you before. We're here to talk about the railing tonight. Just to give you an update, the contractor has been awarded this project. The date of availability started in October twenty-ninth, expect to start date in January of twenty nineteen, and was the overall contract completion date of October first, twenty nineteen. So the overall contract amount is three point three million. That's just some information for you. Right here, this is the option that was chosen at the last meeting when we were here, this three-bar metal rail that you see highlighted in red. And just to get your memory refreshed, the existing concrete barrier out there today is twenty-seven inches tall. We need to bring it up to forty-eight inches to meet all our safety criteria. So this is kind of what it was going to resemble, except there would have been three bars on top of the barrier instead of two. The other option that was presented were what's, were more of a vertical bar. This is the one that we decided not to choose. And the third option that has come up recently is going to be a vertical bar, but it's going to be a much thinner bar, so you'll have right much side distance between them. And this is the recently completed Surf City Bridge, and the section that you see circled in red with the top bar, with the smaller vertical bars, that's about the height that will be on top of the concrete barrier wall here. So remember the twenty, you know, the twenty-one inches of that. So, but you can see here, you've got much more visualization through, through that system. And once again, we're looking at aluminum coating, keeping it simple, but we wanted you to see this to see if the town was interested in this newer option. I can tell you, Ocean Isle decided to go with this option. Question?
That path, that's a walking and bicycle path?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying the total, so the total within the circle, so it's going to be not that third rail that you're showing in this photo?
That's correct.
Okay. But, but will this, will it be three rails or just the two that are within this circle?
There'll be vertical railings like you see in that.
Horizontal.
Horizontal, two bars.
Okay, within this circle, okay. So slightly different than what's in that photo, but just within that, within the circle.
Yes.
So four feet from the, from the surface of the street, right, from the bridge? It's a total height?
Yes, total height.
So people sitting in their car can still see out over the top, right?
Yes, sir.
That one in here photographing.
So it's gonna be not that third rail that you're showing in this photo?
That's correct.
Okay. But will these, will there be three rails, or just the two that are within this circle?
There'll be vertical railings like you see in that section.
Horizontal?
Horizontal, two bars.
Okay, within this circle, okay. So, slightly different than what's in that photo, but just within that, within the circle.
Yes.
So four feet from the, from the surface of the street, right, from the bridge? That's the total height?
Yes, total height.
So people sitting in their car can still see out over the top, right?
Yes, sir.
That one in here photographing across the bridge.
If it was totally enclosed at forty-eight inches, some cars will have some issues seeing through or over. But, and that's the reason why we're trying to give you some of these other details, to give you more of a view.
Yes, I'm like, you can see through better than the other options.
So basically, what we're coming here tonight is this option here with a thinner vertical tight railing versus three bars such as this. We didn't want to make this difficult, and we probably just threw another kink in it. But I didn't want y'all to know we had another option, didn't bring it to you.
I'm doing the third option.
I think there's less likelihood for the strobe effect because they're so narrow. Because that was one of our concerns too about the thicker, remember we all said, people that have problems with strobe effect going through that may have, it may trigger it. This doesn't seem, I think this is more, being more open. I would hope it would be a less likely problem. I have to say aesthetically, I think it looks nice. Seeing an actual picture of it, not just on paper.
I think it's better than horizontal.
Anything you want to add, Hewitt? Well, I got to start with staff, but that's, you know, the decision is yours. The sooner we know the better. This is gonna be one of the first items that we're, that are gonna work on as soon as they start. By getting to the forty-eight inch height, they're able to do their work without having to tie off and so forth.
Was the previous cost one point five million versus the three point three?
I believe it was around a half man. Is that right, Heather?
Well, the cost of the railing is approximately half a million. I'm not sure what the original estimate was for the...
I don't know why I said one and a half, but I had one and a half in the back of my head.
But the half man is a large portion of the overall, I mean, talking about total project, is three point three man.
You're gonna be doing these repairs and this installation over a season, over the summer. Is there provisions as far as Saturday, Saturday work, or...
Yes, we definitely have the time restrictions that we need to be out there. And I think there's a pre-construction coming up, and we told Michael Town represented to be there just to make sure we cover all the events. Just make sure everybody's satisfied with this, this time.
So when do you anticipate start?
So the pre-construction's coming up. They're probably gonna start in January or February.
So when would you like our decision?
Tonight. It's that quick, and it's all about the material. And because when they start, like I said, this is gonna be one of the first things. And we knew this was a rush decision, but I didn't want y'all to see if Ocean Isle went with something different while we all talking about.
Do we need to vote on this, or...
Need a motion.
I move we accept the, your proposed, uh, policy.
A second.
Any discussion, Mike? Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Other side say no, Madam Court. Anything else, sir? Any questions, Mr. Mike? Thank you very much for all the hard work, all of you guys, your departments. Thank you very much. We did level that one, or...
So, wonderful, great.
Mr. Freer, out of number eleven.
Thanks, y'all.
Yeah, so, as required, the, in our package, page forty, the report was sent to the board. I have no, no problems, no comments. Just want to thank the board for the hard work. And they continued to work on addressing the beach inlet issues.
Number twelve, please report.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Great.
So, for the police report, I'm very happy to say that we are having a very mild winter. We have only taken one report in November, when that was one incident report. That was for a vehicle that was broken into. And we looked into that, and we've had no other reports in that area. And to be honest, we're not so sure that the vehicle wasn't broken into somewhere else. When we got back to the beach house, figured out some things were missing. So, it's the only report we've had. We're very happy for that. Very thankful and good. But I do want to give our department some props during the hurricane. And I know it's been mentioned several places, several meetings. But the county board of commissioners actually did a resolution of appreciation last night and was able to present our police department, along with the TriBeach Fire Department. And yes, that's actually a picture there, Marty Cook doing the presentation of plaque. And you can see the group picture there. There was representatives from all emergency services across Brunswick County, W A. TriBeach Fire Department, and Brunswick County EMS, Oak Island Police Department, and Ocean Isle. So everyone was there. It was a good turnout. But they presented us with this, and the short version is, I'd be happy to read the whole thing if you would like, but the short version is, whereas Hurricane Florence made landfall in Brunswick County on September fourteenth, leaving behind devastation in many areas of the county, et cetera, et cetera. The last section therefore be resolved that Brunswick County Board of Commissioners recognizing and extend appreciation to Holden Beach Police Department for their outstanding efforts in serving the people of Brunswick County during this challenging time. So, our police department did good. Everyone did, but they gave us this. We're very appreciative.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Before, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you. I know I didn't touch on the police report much, but it's December. We're very happy with the numbers. Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Clem, number thirteen.
Good evening. Southern pump station number four construction progress update. Y'all were here last meeting. I know you remember we agreed that projected a start update for December the seventeenth, pump station number four. So sadly, to say, we're not gonna make that, that date. The contractor couldn't fulfill that. And the revised schedule for start up is January the fifteenth. The week January fifteenth, airback will be on site. It'll be here for a whole week. We'll have two technicians here troubleshooting everything and kind of back stepping in what I said sadly. As an operator, it's probably not too sad for me because thinking back, that would probably have been a bad date because I'm sure we're probably getting increasing super flows and stuff. People coming down for Christmas and stuff. The last thing I'd want would be issues to have to deal with that. Probably by January the fifteenth, flow will be down a lot. That'd probably be a little less problematic with the, with the bad issues. We're so heading off into the unknown, and who knows? I feel like it's gonna work, but just 'cause I feel that way don't mean it always will. That being said, after that week of startup, it's got a projected date. We're probably doing pretty much through the project by the first of March to last of February. Had worked around quite a few issues, like materials and things like that, getting those. I know it's hard to believe, but a few months ago, five to three months ago, I'm standing here talking about how hard it's gonna be getting steel beams together. Well, they arrived about three days ago. So, we still work around a lot of parts and pieces there to be able to get where we are now. The stairs wasn't laid, which we've got some temporary marriages that have and stuff like that in place where we can proceed. And there's a lot of stuff we had to shuffle around in order to get where we are now. My hat's off to Tim Evans. He's been a big help, come up with a lot of solutions. The airbag's getting more reliable today. With that being said, really don't have anything I could add to that. I do, did give you a copy of expenses to date. Got any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Do you have a projected completion date?
Projected completion date, John, is right around the last February to first of March. But, you know, we should be operational if we don't have any glitches after the week of January fifteenth. But I was talking about hanging on a building and everything, floor swept. The man dusting the bridges is also getting his truck leaving by the first of March. That's what we hoped him for.
Well, you said that was sort of a flag of, this is gonna happen this time and, you know, be aware. There might, we're not expecting, but there might be some glitches? Just so that people kind of, there aren't that many of us here, but...
Well, I have planned on it, uh, I've been watching this, you know. I'm sure when everybody gets here, they'll tell us, run some of that equipment and all that before we, before we do the switch over. At least we'll have their expertise on the side. You know, at that time, if we do the switch, everyone will be having issues or something. We'll get word out to the people that's here. Right now, closures are down, they can say, you know, I think it's very low. But, you know, I know that we'll have an increase in that for Christmas there. People here for a few days, so my looking at it for being late a little bit is probably, I was kinda happy in a way. My crew's got the streets pretty thin. Well, everything we've had going on for the past month. And I would love to see a Christmas break when I get a call from pump station four that we've got one vacuum. We experienced that last night.
No, you're correct, and it's probably smart that we are delayed till after the...
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that, in the beginning we said it. And then another thing, that coordination of airbag, you got to let them know a few weeks ahead of time. So the contractor didn't get far enough, he couldn't let airbag know that I sunned it up. And I'm sure nobody in Indiana didn't want to leave their family, comes home and speaks right there Christmas, you know? Shouldn't have knew that was gonna happen, but I think it's a good thing, so.
So, so the budget, we're still within budget, no change in the...
No change orders to date, and I'm not gonna say it's gonna stay that way. But if there are any, it should be pretty minimal at this time unless we have some kind of major catastrophe that nobody can save, then I'll, I'll keep it ahead. Great job, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clem, respect, number fourteen.
Okay, we had a meeting earlier today where the commissioners and the public who, those who came, went through the proposed amended ordinance, followed by a discussion on rollback. I'll discuss the ordinance first, because that's what's in front of us. There is one change to the ordinance that was put into the packet. There had been a number of requests, and John Fletcher pointed out, we had heard quite a few, and we have received them by email, that recycled bins should be allowed to substitute for some of the waste bins for rental properties where it's one can per two bedrooms. We discussed it and decided that in instances where three trash cans or more are needed for a property, substituting one of those cans with a recycled can could be permissible. So you'll find in fifty point oh eight rental homes that there is a change made, and in fact, we're making a change to what Heather indicated in red. Fifty oh eight A, the last sentence, will read, in instances where three trash cans or more are required, one can may be replaced with a contractor-approved recycling bin. That was the only change made to the document, although it was raised again for us to ask the town attorney whether or not penalty, having a criminal penalty indicated, is necessary or should it all be civil penalty?
In North Carolina, the violation of a municipal ordinance is a criminal penalty, so you have to specifically exclude it. If you want to exclude it, the ordinance must specifically state that. It's a notice. It's in there because it is a notice to folks that review your trash orders. You can exclude it as a criminal penalty, but you must specifically exclude it.
And I would suggest that we remove the criminal penalty.
We did a motion?
Would you want to make that motion? Yeah. I made the motion that we remove the criminal penalty from fifty dash ninety-nine. A second, Matt.
So we must introduce, we must introduce wording that says that we are...
I think if you're approving the ordinance, are you, is that the only change that y'all want to make?
No. I mean, no doubt, in fact. My understanding is we don't have this officially on the table in the form of a motion to approve, begin with, but yet we're making a motion to change it. Is that the problem we've got?
Well, I mean, I, yes, they should adopt it with the changes.
That's why you can't change something that's been approved. Tell them to make a motion to approve it, just injure that tank, easiest way to do it.
So we have to specifically state that we are not going to include criminal? Or, so there has to be wording in there that makes it clear that we opt out of the criminal?
Right. Essentially, we would add to the language, violation of this ordinance shall not constitute a criminal, or not, shall not be a criminal penalty. Instead of the language that says, makes an affirmative, we would say that you would not be subject to it. That would be the easiest way to do it.
Well, I'll be done with all, any possible changes, right? Well, we have to go back originally and approve the ordinance.
Well, you can discuss it.
Now, it's, okay, we had the change for allowing one recycle, and that was where we were all satisfied this morning, except for the question of criminal. We've now heard from the town attorney that we can put in appropriate language so that criminal is not included. So, I think now we are at a final version.
So, to hear about your motion.
I, I, are we still, I would like to discuss it further, actually. Before we go down, because, because we're integrating the rollback, which we agreed what we wanted to do, but what we don't have is a, is a price. So, tell me if I'm wrong, we asked the town manager to put quotes, to request a quote, put a R Q out to get a real price for the whole town rollback, correct?
Tonight? You're gonna do that tonight? I think you were gonna propose that tonight. I don't think you asked him to do it at the meeting earlier. You guys made a decision what you'll act, what you're gonna make them. You're gonna do that next.
We're gonna do that next, but we're doing it, it's, 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 it's in this ordinance as well, right?
No, there are, there are stipulations on rollback that what our discussion was is unless we were willing to bring a level playing field on rollback, changing the ordinance didn't make sense. What is included in this ordinance are the timings for rollback. You know, that things must be rolled back by such and such a time. You roll out at such a period, roll back at such a period, or there is a penalty. The fact that we made a decision that we can have island-wide rollback means that the rollback issue is not really a big, a big issue. But if we had stayed where we were with only ocean bar, there wouldn't be a level playing field for that. So it's, rollback, it does not have to be, rollback per se, the kind of rollback program we have, isn't, isn't part of this ordinance.
In this ordinance, there is a requirement that cans be placed on the curb at a certain time, retrieved from the curb at a certain time, that they be stored permanently in certain locations on a house.
And penalties associated with...
That's correct.
So, it's interrelated. So rollback is, I mean, not, not the agreement that we came to, but rollback kinda is.
It's interrelated, but they're two different issues. The cost and how we're gonna do the rollback is the next item. The ordinance is what we're talking about now.
So, and the next item is that in a ordinance or resolution, or how we, because here's, here's my issue. I, I, I agree, I a lot agree what we talked about earlier. But it's really contingent on the, that...
An acceptable service contract.
Exactly, exactly. So I don't have a contract. All I have is a concept and a, and a, you know. So, so my, my point to that is... So, so my, my point to that is, you know, we have time to, once we get that, we'll, we'll have an understanding of what that, that linkage of the rollback is, and we can vote on it then, that's my, that's my point. Cause we're not in a hurry to, we, there's no hurry to do this, right?
Well, actually, what we wanted to do, Peter, was to implement this so that in the first months of the year, we would have, we're not going to be imposing fines, but we would be issuing warnings so that when people did things that were out of compliance, it would be the educational phase. So that was, the idea was to give us January, February, March, April for the educational phase, and if we, if we don't accept this, and again, the fines, the fines do not start until May, okay? We have to make that clear that we are not going to start enforcement fines until May for that education. So, so that was why it was important to get this through, so we can start, we can start the education process. If, if, if our intent, well, our intent is that we, as the town, provide rollback service, okay? I don't think that we need to wait until we have that firm, firm number bid. We have an estimate, it's probably a realistic estimate. And we go forward to start the education process on the ordinance, and the rollback will follow by season. That was our intent. If we don't do the ordinance, we can't start the education program, and we, and we cannot help the rental agencies prepare their communications for next year.
But I don't, to me, look, I'm voting on something that I don't know a price impact of, right? I mean, I have an eye, an estimate, but I don't know whether it's accurate or not. That's, that's the risk that I'm not comfortable with. And, and, and by the way, you know, we voted on, you know, H B P L A, everybody's sitting up here, I'm, it's a total rollback, so I'm, I'm, we're actually voting for something that I wouldn't use, but I'm paying for, so, just go. Which is, and, and, and if it stays within a, and, and, and there's a lot of people like us, right, that live here full-time, that would not use this service, but we're willing to pay a reasonable, I am anyway, a reasonable amount if it's, you know, for the whole island, it makes sense to me, that's why we talked about it. But I don't know what that, I'm, I'm assuming that's reasonable about, amount, but I don't have, you know, we don't have the detail, we don't have the, you know, the question.
I'd just remind you that until you approve a contract, nobody's gonna pay anything. You know, I'm saying...
David, should you give an estimate that if you sent this out to bid and then we accepted the bids and then to draft a contract, how long that would take?
Was uh, back of a napkin scoping probably mid-January to have a statement of work that would be powerful to the bidding public, couple of weeks for that, I would anticipate we would have a bid package, decision package for the commissioners back at the February meeting.
Of course, you want to get it here, because there's special meaning, right? If we got it right after a meeting in January.
Well, it's got to be good stuff. And that, that's a timing thing.
Oh, I see.
Need that in time, we need that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, as quickly as possible, but yeah, I, I think that's the prudent thing to do, otherwise we're, we're, we're voting on something that you don't even have the information. And I think that hopefully will give us a couple of months to educate the public and the rental folks.
Madam clerk, we did not have a motion on the floor, is that correct?
Um, you do, but I think you wanted to change the motion. The motion was to remove the criminal penalty, but you didn't have it to approve the ordinance.
Well, that motion won't gonna work procedurally, so.
Well, we discussed that, that, to add, to change that though, right? We all agreed on that, or, or you're saying we have to...
Well, you have to have, you have to have it approved before you can start voting on changes on it.
Well, we, we voted on other changes though.
If you guys could do it, if you could, if the way that...
All, all morning we voted on changes, right?
You, what you were proposing, you voted on what I was gonna put in here for you guys, and I made one change, and then Commissioner Kotowski asked that we change another one. So if you guys could make a motion to approve ordinance eighteen sixteen with this, the change about the can, the wording on the can, and with removing the penalties, and maybe based on the attorney's approval of my changing it, cause I, I'm not comfortable changing the criminal...
The word "not" needs to be inserted between "shall" and "be" in fifty point nine nine A.
See, I'm, I'm saying if, if we have to vote on this ordinance, I'm the voter no.
You don't have to, if you wanna approve it, so that...
It's two different issues, I understand, it's two different issues. The one issue is whether we amended to cover a criminal, the other one is if we actually vote to accept it with the, with the proposed amendments, that's, that's the issue.
Correct.
Can, can you clarify, can we, I thought in the past, while we're in this process, we actually altered things before we voted on the project, or the...
That's possible.
So we could put that word in and then decide or not?
Yeah.
Before voting?
Yeah, we just have, before you act, just have to specify, are you voting to change the proposed amendment? Or are you voting to approve as it is?
Yes, yes.
So what you need to do is clarify.
We'll do this in a two-step process.
Yes.
Okay? So I will make a motion that we amend the proposed ordinance to delete and decriminalize any of the violations contained therein. A second there.
Okay, everybody understand where we are?
Yep.
Any discussion, Mike?
I don't think it's necessary.
Anyone else have any discussion? Are you in a vote?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
On the proposed motion, I mean, proposed document for consideration of approval later. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no, it's unanimous. All right, you still have the floor, Mr. Spence.
Do you guys wanna vote on the changes in red too, cause my wording is different from what we talked about tonight, so we just, you want me to amend that also, if we can vote on that?
Yes, "In instances where three trash cans or more are required, one can may be replaced with a contractor approved recycling bin." I move that we alter what is written in red to what I have just stated.
Okay.
Madam clerk, would you read that aloud to the audience and everyone in the room understand what we're doing, cause some people can't see what's in red.
Okay, it would change the sentence to, "In instances where three cash, trash cans or more are required, one can may be replaced with a contractor approved recycling bin." Correct?
Yes.
Could I suggest instead of replace, we use substitute?
That's fine, substitute.
Okay.
Everybody understand? That is... Are we ready to vote on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no, it's unanimous. Mr. Yurich, I believe you're next, sir. Is that not right?
We haven't voted on whether we wanted to adopt the ordinance tonight?
I thought so.
All right.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we adopt the ordinance. As amended. As amended, the proposed ordinance as amended.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I agree, stay the line.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no?
No.
Four to one, Mr. Preier, closing. Motion carried. All right, now we go ahead.
Okay, we had um, a good meeting this morning and discussed trash can rollback and the problems that come with the current situation of partial island rollback, and just to make it brief, the um, general consensus decision of the board, and we were all in agreement, is that there will be, there should be whole island rollback, not only during season, but the Tuesdays on season, and that they will be, it will be covered by continuing the B part contribution and paying the rest out of the general fund. So rollback will be provided island-wide every day that there is trash pickup. Rollback will be empty or full cans so that there will not be cans sitting at the curb for days on end because they were dragged out late. If they were dragged out late, they're going back up under or near the house.
And that's at no cost?
That is, that is B part and general fund, there is no additional cost all year.
It's not no cost, it's...
No, it's no, no, uh, no fee, no fee applied. There will not be a rollback fee applied in addition to the normal taxes that you already pay. So general fund and B part funded. No, that was, that's simply, that was our decision. Do, do we need to have a motion that we accept it? I mean, we sort of passed it over to the town manager to... We need to, we actually, I guess we need to ask the town manager to proceed with a statement of work and going forward with obtaining this.
I understand what the board expects, Peter.
Are you done?
I hope so.
All right, Mr. Yurich, number sixteen.
Yes, sir. Waste Industries is passing on a fourteen dollar and ninety-two cent per bin processing fee for recycling in order to pass that on to the subscribers. Resolution eighteen thirteen would need, need to be approved by the board, which would by default amend our fee schedule. And resolution eighteen fourteen regarding special event fees, this was an item discussed at the November board meeting, and in, uh, it includes the language that sets a race fee at fifteen hundred dollars. So resolution eighteen fourteen establishes a race event fee of fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, in order to implement the revisions to the fee schedule, the board would need to approve both of those resolutions. And I believe that there's a minor typo in the fee schedule that was handed out, Heather sent out an amended ordinance like all twenty cents. It's really immaterial with the adoption of the, of the approval of the resolution that would override the, the fee schedule per se.
I have a question, David. So Waste Industries, are we in the middle of a contract with them?
Yeah, and their contract says that they pass on a processing fee. We're currently not assessed one.
Okay, so within their contract, they intend this.
Blame it on, blame it on the overseas market.
Yeah, okay, just, just checking. And so I, I have a comment just to remind people about the next one is the, you know, we also talked about, and we'll do this in the future, I think, I hope, a special event fee, this is for races only.
This is a, this is a carve-out of, of that other discussion.
For races only, and it's for profit, so we wanna discuss in the future the other for-profit events that, that town incurs expenses to discuss, how to, how to address those. Cause it could be a different, different...
Different set of charges, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Well, I think Mr. Yurich asked for consideration of offering a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution eighteen thirteen and eighteen fourteen as written.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no, unanimous? Mr. Yurich, number seventeen.
Yes, sir, the board had specifically requested that the two previous proposals submitted by Corner School for Consulting Services be scaled down into a single proposal that had two primary focus areas, one being federal issues related to lock with all the island maintenance, and two federal issues related to beach nourishment with the expressed desire for a scope of work that, that addressed goals, actions, projected and probable results to include associated timeline of the same, and also would, had expressed a desire for a client with the success that articulated some of their successes with that, with, with different clients. That proposal has been amended to carry, uh, to carry or to, in response to the board's desires. It is in your package, uh, in your agenda package, complete with the required budget amendment necessary that carries through the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that monthly bill is just shy of seven thousand dollars a month, the budget amendment itself totals forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and I, I know that Commissioner Kotowski had provided a, a letter of support, but specific to the revised proposal. Mr. Butler has provided revision specific fee back on the proposal, and those, um, his input is at page seventy-eight in the agenda package. The proposal that is in the package from Corner School is as is we've gone in front of it. So the proposal is in front of you for discussion, possible action on both the proposal and the proposed amendment.
David, do you see any issue, and I, I, I agree with the two points that Commissioner Butler has, has made. Do you see an issue of requesting these updates and, and you signing that before we, you know, if we agree to that, I guess I'm the lawyer as well. If we agree, if we agree to changes, can, can we vote on it today, assuming those changes can be made?
Yes, sir. I, I think that, and, and also in discussions with Corner School, um, there is an understanding of, of refining and crafting the ask that are, that are in there.
Yeah.
And I would also propose to have the authority that if perhaps we actually refined it a bit more, that perhaps the fee itself could be whittled down to, that's my intent to ask anyway, if the board would authorize me to do that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just as a, you know, and, and I'm sure they understand that, it's just not in here, you know, we're, we're concerned with the distribution of sand on these days. And I'm a hundred percent sure they understand that, cause we have many discussions with them, but it's not explicitly stated in this document. It's, it's more, it states about tragic, which, and, and this, and Commissioner Butler, there's a simple adding that, and I'm comfortable with that. So the other point is, the fifty-year project, I don't know much about that, um, we haven't discussed that, and I think we should set that aside, so not include that. We can add it later, you know, we can revise if we, if, if we learn more about it and have discussions about it, so I, I... So I, I, I feel comfortable with just adding that one item, that's been just a, you know, pretty simple clarification on that one item.
Okay, so I, I just, I just want to be clear, because last time and the time before, we discussed about the two priorities were, of course, the East End and then progressing on finding ways for getting federal help, funding, whatever, for beach nourishment. So are, are you just asking that as a scarf, all we do is focus on the East End Re-nourishment Lockwood Folly area?
I, I, I am, because, because, because I, I kind of hedge my bet on that. I don't, I, I'm actually not, I'm proposing not including the fifty-year plan, but if something comes up, like town manager said about sand, it doesn't, you know, apply to the East End, then we can certainly make that adjustment. But I'm not comfortable with the fifty-year plan, because I don't know much about it, to be honest with you. But if we got, I, I'm also comfortable if we don't want to, we can, we can say East End and, you know, you know, you know, re-nourishment of the other.
And opportunities for.
Yep.
Well, if I don't mind, I'm going to come into this. When I saw this, and I was waiting for some input from them about what they do and how they, what the projects they'd add and that sort of thing. The only thing I'd heard from them before was a note that said Harry Simmons advised them on beach nourishment and logging. And knowing what Harry Simmons put a gift into, I said, well, that's not a big plus. So I looked for some input. They sent ten pages of projects they've worked on the last three years, and not one has to do with the Corps of Engineers, with beach nourishment, or sand. That worries me. And I'm thinking, you know, I've got to be very restrictive if we do anything with them now, have to limit the input till we see what they do, because we haven't heard from anybody else. And I had dinner last night with a person that works for the governor in South Carolina. They had forty companies under contract come out before then. And he said, if we go out for bids, we're going to get a lot of input from good companies, and it may not be at this price, it may be more, it may be better than that worth. But I feel not comfortable representing the, the town owners to spend their money on something that I don't know if there was a better deal. I would, if we're going to give a hundred thousand dollars, how about you go out for bids and find out who else would do it for us? Did they focus on it, or did they focus on sand, on beach nourishment, shoreline protection? Why? The, 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 is not focused on that. They're, they're a good firm, no doubt, but they're not focused on that. So I also, if I was going to limit it right now, I would say, I would only give them a limited contract, and it would be focused on getting that sand from the inlet onto our East End. And if they can do that, and they do that successfully, then I'd be more than happy to expand the role and look at other things they could do for us. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable expecting them to have a long-term contract at seven, eight thousand dollars a month with no process and no experience in the, in what we're looking for.
Well, I think I, I kind of took the position I did, and I'll explain a little bit about it. But I'm sure you folks that live on the East End, all you need to do is go out there and have a look at the, the beach, and look at the amount of erosion that has currently taken place as a result of the storms. We know that we lost eighty-eight thousand cubic yards of sand to our neighbor. And the way we kind of lost it was either being blindsided, something happened. They can make, I could hear all the excuses in the world about easements and everything else, but the bottom line is, we never received a bloody phone call. We never received even an email about it until we went to a meeting and found out about it. Something's wrong, something's wrong. So as you notice within the document that I, that I wrote here, right, our primary focus at this point in time is to obtain beach quality sand to address the East End erosion problems. The other primary concern that I have is to add additional representation at the federal and state levels to support all the items identified in resolution eighteen ten. We've got a beautiful resolution out there. We worked hard on it, and everybody agreed to it, and that, but is it in the wind? Is it floating around in the wind? Folks, I really think we need support, we need help. We've got an email that came to us about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand cubic yards of sand, a dredging project potentially down the, down the road. The email said to both Holden Beach and to Oak Island, are you interested in the sand? Well, hell yes. You know, I don't know, you know, maybe I'm jumping ahead of the game here and this and that, but I just want to explain my logic, my rationale, and my, the position that I think we're in. The position is, right now, we need help. Now let's focus on the areas that we need to help in, the primary focus. So I just want to explain why I wrote what I wrote. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract with the following changes that are on page seventy-eight in our package, where we would add, along, if you look on set one, along with, add along with beach nourishment efforts for placement of beach quality sand on the East End of Holden Beach, and also, and, and, and it's not here, but any other beach nourishment opportunities. And the second one is to remove the fifty-year plan as part of the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, Heather, did you guys get that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher, did you second it?
I seconded.
So I have a motion, a second, discussion.
I, I would just ask the question of, of are you ready to vote on this not knowing what the cost would be? Because now that we've amended what we're asking them to do, I'm sure there's going to be a difference in cost, and I don't know whether you would be willing to vote on that now, not knowing what the cost would be.
Were we just voting on something that we don't know the cost of?
I understand that you objected to it, and I'm wondering if you, if you don't have an objection to doing the very same thing now.
Well, I, I'm reducing it, so I, I would assume that the cost wouldn't be any more, and, and I would also assume that it's an hour, hourly contract, so instead of voting their hours against two objectives, they're voting, they're using their hours against one objective, the same number of hours, that's my assumption.
But I think, Mike, I think the understanding, my understanding with them is that our project managers here, they cannot spend money without confirming with David that it's a good thing.
No, this is a retainer, we send that to them.
This is, we're going to spend that, we're going to pay that, but anything above that, David.
No, I, I understand, John, I understand it perfectly, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that there's a, there's a figure in here now that's just shy of seven thousand dollars to do what they proposed. We're cutting it down. So if they send, if they, if they, are they still going to charge us seven thousand dollars? Are you willing to pay seven thousand dollars for, for, for less work on your part? For less, for less issues for them to address for our benefit?
The seven thousand wasn't going to cover everything we want, that's just the retainer, that's the basic round. You're going to pay at least that.
John? You could pay significantly. Let, let's go back a month ago. Then the retainer price was ninety thousand dollars because there were more issues that they were going to address for us. Now they've come back, they've cut back on the issues they're going to address, and they've lowered their retainer. We're now asking them to do even less. I think that they should lower their retainer, and I also think we should know what that number is. Is it going to be seven thousand dollars, or is it going to be five thousand dollars? Is it going to be, you know, you can say you assume, but you know, it happens when you assume.
Wasn't there two options though, last time? Wasn't there a, a full one?
Ten thousand.
Yes, but, but even with this, there was like five, option one was, was, was going to adjust five issues, option two, they were going to adjust more.
What were, what were the prices though? I don't, I don't.
I think, I think the total look was a hundred and eight thousand at one, and about ninety thousand.
I, I thought it was seventy-five hundred, so I, I think it was very close to this number, the, the lesser one, Mike. So I think it's very close, so they can reduce it, but I, I don't expect much reduction, so.
Again, I'm just looking for some.
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough.
Continuity and some logic in some of the.
Question is whether or not we'd like to, to me, we would accept it on the understanding that it will cost no more than the proposal, and that there is likely to be a slight reduction.
Well, I, I, we're also adding the, remember, we're, we're taking away the fifty-year, but we're adding.
Yeah.
The other, you know, the other, anything that's, you know, beach nourishment for it as well, so to me, that's a.
And that's the kind of stuff that will come out when they do their legislative updates to us monthly, because that's what flags those kinds of things, that there's opportunity. That's the real benefit of having somebody.
Absolutely. So me, so, so to answer your question, Mike, really, I think we're really substituting the fifty-year for not a specific project, but anything that's, presents itself as sand re-nourishment on, other than, other than the East End.
I just wanted to know if you were comfortable without knowing the cost.
I know the cost.
Pat, Pat had an idea about not exceeding, wasn't that an idea of Pat?
I'm just saying that is it, is it that what people are happy to approve is engaging Corner School with the understanding that the cost will not exceed this proposal.
That's, yeah. Right. And I also, just so, the bottom of that email that I wrote, I had asked David a question, would you also clarify that the, that any Ferguson involvement is contained within the monthly tenure? And yes, it is. David responded back to that, too.
And, and I just have another comment. I, I agree with what John said, but we're, we should have talked about that three months ago, to be honest with you. With, and, you know, no, no criticism of you, but we, you know, our time is, we need to do something, and, and I know this is a lot of money, but it's worth, if we, if it works, then it's worth the money, and I'm willing to take that risk.
I go beyond that. Mike, with a smile, said, you're going to pay that much. I'd be happy to pay a lot more if they come back and say they've messed away to get us that two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand yards out of the inlet on our East End.
And, and fund it, and fund it.
I'm not against it. I guess what I was trying to do was, again, point out the way we conduct business here, it's not done rationally, that in five minutes, you vote one way, and ten minutes later, you vote another way.
Oh, good question.
I was just trying to, trying to make that point for the twentieth time.
It's good for me now.
Okay.
We move, yeah, we made a motion.
I would suggest that you have to remove that motion, because it doesn't contain any language about the cost of this being no more than, so if you want to make a.
Can I just update it, Mr.?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to follow, I don't. The, the motion was to accept with the changes, right, with the changes.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine, I don't think we have to, because the, the price is there, but if, if, if that makes you happy, we can say not to exceed the price in this contract. Because the price is there, but we're making changes.
But we're not accepting that offer. We, we are giving basic contract law. They've offered us a contract, we, we are giving them a counter offer. They, they don't necessarily have to honor what they've said of us. So if we make the counter offer, we should include what we expect to pay.
That a turn?
Yes, contract law, offer acceptance, offer rejection voids the current offer on the table. I understood the town manager say that he believed from his discussions that if those things were modified as outlined in the packet, that you would be able to enter into a contract with them for a lesser part. I understood the board to say that you would give him the authority to do that in your discussion, though it has not been incorporated into your motion.
Thanks, sorry. So with that understanding, can we vote on this?
I'm going to pose a question, if I may. I want to make sure I'm hearing what is being considered, only pertaining to the East End of the beach sand. Is that what we're hiring them for?
Not sure. No, we, we, I then changed, amended that to say other beach nourishment opportunities on, on any parts of the island.
Okay, so East End, sand, and other nourishment.
Correct.
And that's all we're hiring?
Correct. As a start, good point. As, as the town manager's described.
Okay, I, I'm kind of a simple-minded guy. I'm going to get my fishing boat, and I'm going to take half a dozen rods and reels, and I'm headed offshore. And I look at all these schools of fish as I'm going out, that they were all good eating fish, fun to catch and all, but I'm only going to catch that one kind of fish that day. So that's all I'm going to do, fish, that one fish somewhere out there. And well, by that, it's all this other good stuff I'm looking at. And that's the way I see whoever you choose to hire, if you're going to give them a limitation on what they're there for, specific, and they're in a Corps of Engineers meeting, or they in Capitol talking to a senator, unless it's about sand going on Holden Beach on the East End or somewhere west of the East End, that's all we want them to do. We're not going to want him to talk about the intercoastal waterway or any other issues other than what you just described. Makes no sense to me. I mean, I, I hate to be critical, and I'm excited if there's a possibility to get some help.
Well, I, I think the town manager said that he has a relationship with, with this firm, that they would, they would come to him if there's other opportunities, but I'll, I'll further your analogy. If you're going tuna hunting, are you going to say, oh, well, you know, there's, there's other fisheries, but I'm, I'm just going to, you know, divert from that? No, I want, I want you to focus on tuna.
My point is, if they're in Washington, and they're talking about several things, that representative that we hire is only going to get involved with that, unless they call David Hewitt and say, we're in Washington with Senator Joe Blow, and they're talking about sand, so do we have permission to talk? I mean, I don't understand. Either you're in or you're out.
Then why did they offer, why did we, did you make a list? Why did they present us with two different lists? I mean, I, we're just extending that logic to, to, to focus their, their work.
Well, I, I'm failing to make my point, and whatever you all want to do, you're going to do. I'm just telling you, the fifty-year thing? I was enjoying, I was enjoying your expression. The fifty-year program, I fought like hell, and I watched each time get their fifty-year program in place, and see where they went. They outran us, we got left to the dust. And here, people, if you don't get involved, you're going to keep falling further and further and further behind, and what, what you're doing. further and further behind and what, what you're doing now, you're going hunting with a B B guy and there're elephants out there. It ain't going to work that way. It will be better than what we've got, but it ain't going to work. We need somebody that wherever they are, if they have an opportunity to represent us, that they have authority to do something to help us. And that's the sum, summary. I'm not going to say anything else, it's all pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the way I look at it is, I'm looking for a benevolence for all the, all, that's what I'm looking for, because we have an immediate problem, we have an immediate concern and that has to be addressed and we need help. And I want to focus on this immediate problem because I don't want to see the east end of the island end up where we were before.
All right, Chief, ready to vote?
I think, one more thing, we can go back and remember that the presentation that was made initially did say that they were used to having municipalities start small and continue to work with them and add things as one task was complete to bring another one in. So I think it would probably behoove all of us in the first part of the year to learn more about the situation on the 50-year plan, which as the mayor says, has been a big disappointment. And then as this progresses, maybe that is where we put our next, our next priority. That could be an objective.
I'm all for that. Give me, give me some information about the 50-year plan. There's several things in it that I totally disagree with, but we should make the decision on the 50-year plan as a board before we pay somebody to advocate for us for that, so.
That can be something that we introduce into the discussions early next year. But getting started is a good thing.
Ready to vote? I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Announced and carried. Number 18.
Y'all also need to do their budget amendment, ordinance 1817.
The motion approved, ordinance 1817, and ordinance submitted, the new appropriation ordinance, official year 1819, amendment number four.
John, you making the motion, second?
Joe.
Please second the discussion, Mike?
No.
Anyone else? I'm afraid the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, say no, announced, number 18. Question?
I move that we approve ordinance 1818, and ordinance submitted, the whole engage code of ordinance is chapter 30, the town government officials, section 30, number 26, audit committee of the B O C.
Second? Discussion?
I, I still see that there is, to me, an inconsistency in how members are placed on the audit committee. And we had a discussion on this last time and I remember that the town attorney would say that it was better to have consistency on how members are appointed to our various boards and committees and in other boards and committees, the board of commissioners interviews and votes for the members that are going to be added to a board or a committee. Only the audit committee is saying that the chairman appoints the members and frankly, I, I just don't think that that's really the way that we should operate. I would look to have the audit committee provide us with a sort of qualifications list, the priority qualifications that you would expect people to have to be able to serve on the board and then let the board of commissioners interview the candidates and make the selection, not that the chairman makes the selection and brings them to the board as this is, this is the person that we want to have. It's more consistent with how we're doing it.
You're going to hear every candidate from the podium there before you decide if, if the proposal from your chair was the right one. You'll have a chance to tell, I'm right now the audit chair, if I propose to you that so-and-so is to be the one to join the thing, you can say no, we don't agree. And you will have seen all the credentials, you'll see the proposal.
John, we had this discussion and we have a lot to go, but the essence of it is that if five people submit themselves for candidacy to be on the board, you and the, and the existing people, interview those five people and then say, I want one or two. So we get to vote on the people that you've selected without ever actually talking to the other three people.
That's true, they're going to be here, you're going to see everybody, every, she's going to go out with a call, everybody's going to come get, make their presentation.
John, since the last meeting, I had people tell me that they submitted their name and they never got an interview. Or if they got an interview, it was a phone call from you and that, and that they didn't even realize it was an interview until they complained. So it just, let's, let's look at it this way. There is no reason why, I don't believe my colleagues have the ability to look at a resume and especially if there are some guidelines that we should look at, that the person has these qualifications, this is what we're looking for, we want these qualifications. Why do my colleagues feel that they are incapable of making that decision? That this is the only committee that we allow the chairman to make, to make those decisions and then put it up to us? And I would like to say what Pat said, last, last meeting, while we had this discussion, again, I want to keep it going forever, for commissioners, we are asked what practices are, and they ask if this is what they do in Fayetteville. Attorney Fox responded that Fayetteville is different. She believes that the situation you have, in that situation, you have outside professionals and more than one commissioner serving on the committee, so it is not apples to apples. She thinks that generally consistency is good. If you treat all of the advisory committees the same, it leaves it without the ability for people to scrutinize. If the board is appointing all the other advisory committees, then the board should appoint members of this committee too. If you want to carve out specific requirements, you can add those. That's from page 21 of the minutes of last month's meeting. So we hire an attorney to give us some professional guidance and for whatever reason that I'm still unable to find, that makes any sense to me, we're going to disregard that and leave ourselves open to, to criticism. It just doesn't make sense to me. Any more infraction?
Madam Clerk, we've got a motion forward, is that right?
Correct.
It would be a simple thing to change this, to simply have that the members will be appointed by the board of commissioners, following general guideline, you know, based on general guidance of qualifications provided by the audit committee, something like that, that makes it clear that there's, there's a job description, sort of, if you think of it that way. And then as of all other committees, the board of commissioners simply makes the vote, makes a selection.
But shouldn't the committee have the ability to be able to assess and evaluate the number of candidates for the position and then screen the candidates, just like any HR department would screen them? And then they would furnish you with the, with the people that?
We don't do that with other boards and committees though, no. We're asking for consistence, simple consistency.
So you're going to switch to the years that they're on there as well?
No.
They're one-year terms.
They're one-year term. That, there's, this is the only point that is still.
The only one that's one-year term.
I have a question for the attorney. I thought committee members were subject to any time that the commissioners wanted to remove them, they can't. Just because they're appointed for one year doesn't mean they're there for God's sake for a year, you don't have a high water.
Yes.
So it's at the pleasure of the board, all the committees, individuals for pleasure of the board.
But I think the point is the other committees are more than one year.
They're making their, they're still there.
Sure, sure.
But also the other, they just don't have, we as a board, when we put somebody on planning and zoning, I don't know how we decide if they're the right candidate for planning and zoning, they don't have planning and zoning experience.
I argue this is unique, this is unique board for their boards.
It is a unique board and I've, I've worked this for, for a lot of years. There's laws now in public companies, you have to have accounting experience, you have to have been a controller, you have to be a CPA to be on this committee. And we are not pushing now to get more and more financially experienced people on that board, but if it just turns out to be a political deal, that we pick who, the guy we want or the gal we want to be on there, you won't have a job in the audit committee, they won't be doing the job.
Are you really saying that you don't think that we can interview somebody with technical qualifications based on our experience that we have, that this, all of our experiences? That we're not capable of conducting?
Oh, you can do that.
A, a, a proper interview and judge qualifications? Because again, it would be.
But the audit committee is different and it's an attitude thing as well. You can have a CPA, but there are people who have CPAs that I wouldn't put on our audit committee.
And I've hired a lot, I've interviewed a lot of PhDs that I didn't hire because they had qualifications, but not, I, I understand that.
But again, John, you raised this, this issue last month or so, that you interview them and they may be qualified, but you don't feel as if they, they're ready to challenge the, and that's so subjective and that's really one of the reasons I don't think it should be left to you and the other people. If you like the person, they're going to get in, but if for some reason you don't like them despite the fact they're qualified, they're not going to get in and I'm never going to get a chance to even know that because you've already culled the available candidates. I mean, it just does not make sense. And Peter, I'll ask you, you don't feel that you're qualified to, to listen to all of the candidates and vote on it? That, that's what, this is a special committee that you don't possess the, the ability to evaluate, to vote on?
You referenced another town, that they have more than one maybe, but they do it differently than what, what we normally do on the committee, it's, it's treated differently.
They've hired, they've hired outside.
They have different makeup of their board, is what I was speaking about at the last meeting. I've got the city of Fayetteville charter, it's composed of three city council members, a member of Fayetteville Public Works, two members of the business community, the city manager and an internal auditor broker. It's not apples to apples. This is an advisory board, it cannot substitute the judgment of the board of commissioners. You have the ultimate responsibility to manage the town's finances. It is an advisory board, it can be disbanded, it is not a function of government, it is supposed to support you in your role of overseeing the town's finances. Unlike planning and zoning, that is a mandated board by statute, or the board of adjustment, which is a mandated board by statute.
Question, Madam Attorney, the members of the board, not this board, the board we're talking about the appointments on, audit committee. They meet, but they don't have the authority implied or otherwise to go to any member of the town staff and say, how much did that tractor cost? I want to see the invoice. That's not their job, is that correct?
They should work through a staff liaison, just like all other advisors.
Which is the town manager.
Um, yes, I believe that's.
So everything, all the questions and all the actions that begin and are followed through, concerns of this audit committee, point of contact, town manager. You know, I, I've got a mayor friend of mine somewhere else in the state that one of their problems came up where some of appointed people started going direct to the town staff and interrupted things and I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding, separation of the members of audit committee and the staff.
They also tend to make recommendations to the board, they don't make any decisions. They're only going to look at things and come to the board with their report. But, but, and Mike, what you're suggesting is you don't trust me to evaluate them and propose to you, which of all of the ones you've seen are the right ones to pick?
What, I didn't say.
But you all get to vote on them.
I didn't say I didn't trust you. What I said was that I believe that since we are the board of commissioners, that I and the rest of the commissioners should have the ability and the right to interview every candidate for every board and not rely on.
You will this, you will this one as well.
John, I will only interview the people that you forward.
No, no, every, when chief sends out the call, every resume that comes in, they will come here and have the chance to come before a meeting and talk to us, every single one. We had one last year, an accountant that didn't get selected and we had one that didn't get selected because David asked him to run it, it was after we had that call. I interviewed him and I've talked to him since and he's, he's a good guy, I would propose probably the next time, if there's a space, that he come onto the audit committee. But you will have that chance to say no as a board, the board will, and you will hear every single one that sends us a resume.
Well, then, and the word appointed then is the issue, if that's what you're saying, John, if you look at, picture anyone, the second line. The public member shall be appointed by the chairman.
It's subject to confirmation of the board. The board doesn't confirm them, then it doesn't, it doesn't work.
But you're pre-selecting them like Mike said.
I'm not suggesting that what you should think.
So, so that, that word, so you're making a recommendation, but you're not, you're not calling out, you're not removing candidates?
They're all there, I'll just tell you the one, I'll give you a tick.
Okay, totally different, totally different.
No, it's not, because we went through this last time. Everybody can come here, but John and his group interviewed those people and then we are told that they think Mary or Ed or Bill is the right candidate. They've been, they, the, the available group has been reduced and limited to what John and, and the current people on the board think.
Not true, not true, not true. He's saying it's not true.
When we pick somebody for the planning and zoning board, they come here, the candidates come to work, and we talk to them and we decide.
So I would.
At you. Here, you're still going to get that with the audit committee.
I would change the word appointed to recommend. And then, and then you can either ignore that recommendation or accept it, that's the, the board prerogative. So I would say just change one word to recommend on the second line.
Mike, is there one for you, can I get a recommendation to you?
That would be, that would be perfect.
And you will talk to every, every person?
That's all I, that's all I ask.
Are y'all okay with the language? The chairman of the B O C audit committee shall recommend to the B O C the member to be appointed, subject confirmation by the board of commissioners. I don't think we can just change one word because the sentence doesn't work, but I think the intent is to change one word, yeah.
Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I'm going to write it up.
I have a question from Madam Attorney. Is there anywhere that's implied or written that anyone that applies for those positions will be made known to all the commissioners?
What is the practice now in the town? Town clerk advertised, town clerk receives applications?
Who are we asking for this board or for?
For, what is the, what is the stat, how do you receive applications for positions that are, that is.
I send out a notice and then they give the resumes to me.
And then what do they get for those resumes? If you're talking about planning and zoning, board of adjustment, rec committee, whatever the case may be, what would you do with those?
I schedule a special hearing with the board and they all come here.
And they get all of their applications?
All the applications come here and everybody comes to me.
That's the way that the town operates now, it shouldn't be a deviation.
Well, what we're adding though is one step, she's, she controls the applications, we're adding a step where prior to coming here, they go to the audit committee, so they, they can, they can present their, their recommendations as well.
That's not what this says, no.
It says the board.
This says it's appointed by the chairman.
It doesn't say it goes to the audit committee.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 all it's saying is, what it doesn't say is if the audit committee as a whole interview, it, it doesn't state that. Okay, that's, I think that's what the, so it is an interview. Okay, that's, I think that's what the, so it is an interview by the Audit Committee. That is different than only the chair. It's not specified. It's not specified that the Audit Committee pre-interviews. That's nowhere in here.
I'm honestly, in my, I don't know that that makes sense because their terms all expire after, they don't have to go after a year, but their term's normally a year. So if the Audit Committee's interviewing, technically they should all be up in the year and you're deciding if they still, that doesn't really, I mean, to me, that doesn't make sense because you have four members now. At the end of the year, technically all four of those members could roll off. So who's interviewing?
Or they're going to interview themselves.
But I, I asked them, are you interested in being in the pool for the next year?
But then they would have to interview, would they interview them? It doesn't really flow because they would be interviewing themselves if they're interested again. Like, why would they recommend themselves versus?
That's why the chair makes the decision rather than the group, huh?
So then it's a recommendation by a member of the Board of Commissioners. I mean, the, essentially you're, you would interview all the candidates-
The chair is a member of the Board of Commissioners.
And the chair of the Board of, the chair of the Audit Committee, who is also a Commissioner, would give his recommendation to the rest of his Commissioners. I mean, that's how it's drafted now except for it's set appointed. So if it was intended to be a recommendation, then John is the chair of the Audit Committee when the candidates are interviewed by the Board of Commissioners as a whole would make a recommendation.
And the board has complete control to say yes or no.
Then all who have applied through the clerk will have a presentation.
That's correct.
They have a chance to do that.
To the board.
They have a chance to do that to the board.
To the board.
Heather, you agree?
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm confused. I don't-
So am I.
I'm sorry. I, I just, if you give me wording, I'll amend the ordinance.
Well, I think that before we work on the wording, let's make sure everybody's on the same page.
I mean, just for me now, it gets back to the same thing. If we were looking for PNC or parks, whoever submitted their name would stand at the roster. They would give a little presentation, and then we would vote on them. We would vote on them. So now we're having an intermediate step for the Audit Committee, right? Everybody's going to get a chance to make their little presentation, but then they're going to have to go and present themselves to you and the board, and then you're going to make a recommendation.
Right. And the difference is that other groups, when we elect them, when we select them, they're going to go back and they're going to pick a chair. There won't, there's no Commissioner on those boards. This is the only one that one of us, one of the Commissioners is the chair of that committee because it's that important.
Let's take the Commissioner off.
Yeah. I still, I understand what you're saying, John, but I still don't understand why my colleagues don't feel qualified to do that, especially if we have a qualification that's going to be-
What I'm suggesting is that the town clerk should advertise, she should receive all, all of these folks, I'm talking about moving forward. All of that information should be disseminated to the Board of Commissioners. You as a board should conduct interviews just like you do for every other town committee. The chairman of the Audit Committee is also a member of the Board of Commissioners. At your meeting where he has interviewed with you, he will make his recommendation about who he thinks should be on the board, but the board as a whole will make the appointment by voting on each candidate.
But that, that's not the way I understand it to be. I understand that in addition to making a presentation, say tonight, then at a, at a subsequent time.
Previous, at a previous time, I would have talked to them.
Oh, previous, that's previous.
Previous time.
Well, each of you could do that as well as an over there Commissioner.
I interviewed them before, I interviewed them either from a phone or a person before they come to the board, but they come to the board. And the board makes the decision.
Heather, you-
No, no, I understand you're going to write something and submit it to-
Yes.
Did you already?
No, she did. I want to go over on this.
So it should say that the chairman of the Board of Commissioners Audit Committee shall make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the public members, or who shall serve as a public member, period. And the remaining of it should stay, which is that an elected Commissioner is the chairman, that each public member has a normal term of one year, and that all serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. And the town should follow its normal procedures.
So do I need to amend the, no, is that an amended motion or amended?
I would amend this amended.
I need to, Madam Clerk, have you got a clear understanding of what you're going to write there?
I think I'm going to change the sentence to say, "The chair of the Board of Commissioner Audit Committee shall make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on who shall serve as the public member?"
Yes.
Member, sorry.
So I move that we accept the charter as amended.
That's second.
Aye to discussion. All right, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. No. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, we're up to nineteen. And that would be Ms. Pat.
Um, yeah. A is, is gentleman, is-
On page eighty-two, I moved that the second sentence contained in Rule Number Thirteen, Agenda on Page Five of the Suggested Rules and Procedure for the Town of Holden Beach Beach Board be revised. To be consistent at both regular and special meetings, I'd like for the current wording in that sentence to be standardized for both regular and special meetings to encourage public participation, to provide comments on the agenda items. I also, from the last meeting, in reviewing Page Sixteen, I noted that that would be a perfect place to also put that comment.
How was the motion?
Yes.
Is it second, Peter?
That's second.
Sound like Bob, second, Peter.
I just, I just want to say, I am, again, I am all for public comment and discussion. You know that. I'm just questioning whether or not we need to do this because it is not prohibited for us to have public comment at special meetings. It simply isn't specified that it has to be, it's, public comment is the board must provide at least one opportunity for public comment each month at a regular meeting. It doesn't prohibit that we can do it. So I just question whether or not we always have to add things to be specific when we don't, they're not prohibited. And again, we used a rules and procedure document that Mo sent us as a template to develop our sort of Town of Holden Beach special ones, and we were trying as much as possible to keep to that document, which again, it, it doesn't prohibit it, so it is allowed. So I, I don't know that we have to do it. I'm not saying that I'm going to be opposed to saying public comment. I always want to have public comment. Does it, does it really serve us to put it in?
So to me, it's a clarification. You're right, we don't have to put it in. We could do, we could vote suspension of rules, but I, I think that the public will know that in special meetings they can, so they'll, they'll show up. They don't have to wait for us or, or we don't have to put in an agenda that we're going to do a suspension of rules. So I think it's really the clarification for everyone there that they, that they can in a special meeting.
Again, it's not a suspension of rules because it's not prohibited. It's not a suspension of rules for us to decide to do public comment at a special meeting because it's not prohibited in this.
Let me interject, so I'll try to help you.
Yes.
If it's on the agenda-
Yes.
Then the Commissioners do not have an opportunity to vote and deny people's ability to talk. If it's not on the agenda for people to speak, they can't speak unless you vote to allow them to speak. So a lot of people that see the agenda, "Oh, I can't even talk, I'm not going to do that."
Exactly.
Well, I think we could just set a policy that we put that on every agenda.
That's what we're doing, Derek.
Every minute.
That's what this is.
That is what this is. That is what this is.
It's a policy.
But let me, let me ask you a question. When we had the special meeting to talk about the Amicus brief, and I made a motion to have comments.
You did make a motion to have comment.
I did. I did. I had a motion to amend the agenda to have public comments.
But you can't do that, you can't do that at a special meeting, but we could waive the rules of order.
Well, that's, that's the point. There is no rule against it, and, and what I wanted to do is I wanted to talk to the mayor, because the mayor said that you cannot prevent people from speaking, but we did at that meeting. There was a vote held that prevented the people from behaving.
I'm sorry, we can because it wasn't on the agenda and you were asking to put something on the agenda. So we're following law because we had one minimum-
I guess if this would keep this from ever happening again, I'd rather put it in that. If it would keep that situation from ever happening again-
That's why I asked.
But again, it's not denied in the back, but if it will keep that from happening ever again-
But you keep saying that you weren't, you weren't allowed to do it, and I'm saying that you are incorrect because there is nothing that prohibits you from making public comments at a special meeting.
Mike, there is something that would exclude you from changing the agenda on a special meeting.
So you can as a board allow public comment on a matter that is on your agenda. The restriction on special meeting is that you have to only discuss the items that were noticed. That does not preclude you from allowing the public to comment during that. That is a procedure that you have, and most boards do during special meetings. They do not receive public meeting comments unless it's something that requires a public hearing. So many cities do like an agenda briefing with their staff, and the public may attend that, have an option to hear the Commissioners, and then when they have their regular meeting, which does require that there be a public comment period, they then receive comments during that time. But you are allowed to have the public give you input during a special meeting, but you're not required to do so.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly. No prohibition, but it's-
But these rules as a benefit would allow for you, would require you to have a public comment period as the proposed amendment is drafted.
Hold on, time out. I mean, I'm on clarification about agenda on special meetings.
Yes.
That was added, an additional item to the agenda.
It is not an additional item to receive public comment on a matter that is advertised as an agenda item that the board will be discussing. So for example, on the Commissioners' agenda tonight-
Why do we have our agenda stating that public comments in this agenda are-
That is the way that the Town of Holden Beach receives public comment.
And not, not only that, but it is an agenda item on a regular monthly meeting because we have to have public comments.
You could put public comment, so there's a difference between-
I love you have to do it once a month.
That there is, yes, but there's a difference between public comment and public, and items that require a public hearing. So some things do require a public hearing. I, the best I can tell from why your agenda is drafted the way that it is, is that you want to get feedback at the end from the folks that attend these meetings on how the meeting went and items and decisions that were made. So you get their comments on advance and then they follow up at the end, but it's not required.
And I think this is something that the town, the town would also, the town management would also have to see included, that we make that statement.
I move that we accept the recommendation, make a motion that we accept the recommendation. Have we already done that?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
We're ready for a vote.
Ready for a vote? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Are we now at my thing?
No, now we have the confusion. We've, we've had so many discussions and, and I would say irritations around last minute things being brought to meetings, that occurred to me that one of the best things we could do would be to just clarify Part Six, Rule Thirteen, Part B, where we had left a word in that was significant, that it was being used, you know, that if you brought something to a meeting and it was viewed as just a small matter, then we could discuss it and vote on it. And I would simply say that we should change, removing the word significant, so that it reads, "Items that are added to the agenda at a meeting in combination with supporting documentation will be designated for discussion with action deferred to a later session." So that allows introduction of a point onto the agenda for discussion, that we can then make a decision at the following meeting. But if you bring something in writing that has to be read and understood and the public hasn't had the opportunity to see it ahead of time, we shouldn't take an action at that meeting. We should limit ourselves to discussing it, and we can act at the next meeting. So I would move that we amend Part Six, Rule Thirteen, Part B, removing the word significant from the last sentence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Hearing man, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. All right, unanimous. Number twenty.
I asked you to add this item to the agenda because prior to my being elected to the Board of Commissioners, I was on the Planning and Zoning Board, and at that time we were asked to look at the issue of the large flooding houses on Holden Beach. And a lot of time in that was put into it, and at that point, came to a decision that there probably wouldn't be a need to change our zoning laws because the existing laws, such as setbacks and the parking regulations and so forth, would, would be enough to limit the, the amount of such houses that could be built on the island. Sadly, I think we came up short there because in the last year we had three houses that were built here that advertised that you can have between twenty and thirty people renting the house at any one time. So it really, our, our common zoning doesn't, doesn't accomplish what most people, I think, on the island would hope. So there was an article, there was a printed in the paper where it said there are a couple of municipalities that have suggested some different ways to approach the situation. And what I would propose is that the Planning and Zoning Board be asked to contact the people in these municipalities, find out, get copies of what type of rules and regulations zoning initiatives that they are proposing, see if they're feasible or applicable to be potentially used on Holden Beach. And so I would-
I totally agree.
I would propose that, the proposal is that the Planning and Zoning Board consider the feasibility and applicability of the zoning proposals instituted by municipalities within their county to, one, Southern Shores, creation of a residential overlay district. The proposal would require stricter development standards for homes built within the district based on the size of the proposed home. And number two, Duck, which is proposing the use of size, to use lot size in determining allowable sector capacity, I'm sorry, to use the- allowable septic capacity, I'm sorry, to use the lot size and the, in determining allowable septic capacity and house size. So, those two, those two proposals are being used in other municipalities as a way to allow people to have sizable homes, but not homes that are.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, Mike, could we, you know, septic, we don't have septic here. Could we say, I mean, using that as an example of.
Of size is what he's saying.
That's true. We don't have septic system.
But, you know, but that's an example of something that could be applied.
Well, you can go.
So, I just don't restrict it to septic tank, or septic system, is my point.
You're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna be able to limit the number of people in those houses, because you can't limit the number of bedrooms.
Exactly, and this is another attempt to get around the limitation on bedrooms. They're trying to, they're trying to get the same outcome, attacking it in a different way. I sent you a note asking you if you had any input on this.
Well, but it's the same thing. The statute is clear, you can't limit the number of bedrooms in a residential dwelling. It's clear. Oak Island has done something similar to what you're talking about, but the only thing they've managed to do is put restrictions on different sized houses. For instance, the houses that were built down there, they would be under their lowest limitations for their special permitted use, which means that that same house could be built over there now without any restrictions under their standards with an infinite number of bedrooms in it. Because there's no limitations on the size of a bedroom or the number of bedrooms, the legislature says you can't do that. You can't legislate what's inside the house. So, they've effectively written a rule, but no one has, because it's just like now, just like here, we literally have a house down there that's half the size of the big house down there, but it has 11 bedrooms in it, or 10 bedrooms, I can't remember. But there's several of them, there's like two or three of them down there. But they're less, they're less than 4,000 square feet. So.
Let me ask you a question, Mike. Do we have a rule here about so many parking spaces per bedroom? So, they have 11 bedrooms? Do they have 22 pockets?
If they have like 10 bedrooms, they meet the core requirement. We've checked and double-checked.
It's one per bedroom.
Yes, one per bedroom.
And they've got it. I said they have 11.
I mean, we're doing our job.
Of course, we're.
We're doing our job, but I'm just saying that it's a difficult task to, and I'm saying the same things over and over. I'm telling you that Oak Island has done it. I talked to Steve myself. They have three different standards over there. The problem is, is that while they're limiting the size of the houses, they are not limiting the activity that's in them or the number of bedrooms, because the statute says you can't.
And that may be true, or it is true, but I would then think that the person who rents a house and they have to sleep in a cubicle like they were a monk may not want to rent that house again.
So, I think the point, I think the point is, Mike, let's do it. Time has changed, so let's readdress it, let's readdress the situation.
I mean, if that's the case, the problem takes care of itself.
There were 11 cars, however, four of them were in the right of way. They were parked right up to the street, you don't need 11 cars in there.
I mean, what I'm saying is, is that they have successfully done something about the larger houses, but they are not success, they're not being successful in changing the behavior or the number of bedrooms in them. They have been successful in limiting the size.
Well, what we're asking is for Planning and Zoning to investigate it and then to see if it's feasible. If it is, we'll implement it. If it's not, we won't.
My only point is, you know, we don't want to restrict them.
Well, we can just change, I have to look at this.
Well, you can say that, and other, you know, just add in other possibilities or something, you know.
Excuse me, I was right there.
Oh, okay.
Let's see. Just change the number two from DUC to investigate proposals that DUC has suggested.
If DUC is talking about septic systems, septic systems are the only way that you can legitimately limit the number of bedrooms, because septic systems are governed by on-site wastewater. And because of that, you're limited, you could take a 10,000 square foot piece of property and be limited by the number of bedrooms, because you can't get enough leach field for the septic system. Okay? That's not a taking of the property based off of a size. Okay? So, everybody has an equal right based on the properties of their soil to be able to have an equal home if they're the same. That's why DUC can write those rules that limit the bedroom, because they have on-site wastewater. The same as my house. I live in the middle of 60 acres. My land doesn't perk well enough, I can only have three bedrooms. I've got to come up with more land or build a leach field. So, that's, that's the difference. So, I would look more towards Oak Island, you know, maybe somebody like that. DUC is, would not be a good one.
Well, I made the proposal, I think we seconded, so.
Any more discussion? Hearing man, all ahs. All ahs. Say no. Janice, again. Great. Ms. Bass, time.
As we're going into a new year, I just thought that it would be beneficial if we set up sort of a workshop meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the Town Manager to agree major 2019 objectives before we begin the budget process. It doesn't just have to be the things that we think of in terms of, like last year when we did for budget, but it could be some of the general things that we might like to do as well. But I think it would just be a good organizational meeting to start the year off, and then we're all on the same page.
I agree.
So, if we all agree that this could be useful, it could be making sure that Heather has our January calendars, so that we can do this as early in the month as possible.
Agreed.
All right, then we'll all give Heather our January dates. That's right. Thank you.
One problem.
Oh, no.
For me, some of the boards that I serve don't have their calendars yet. Until we have our first meeting, it's already scheduled, so about the first week of January, second week of January, so I'm probably not gonna have all my stuff.
Okay, well, then, we'll have to have a meeting in the second half of January, but we can all get Heather our dates as soon as possible.
All right. Ms. Fisher?
All right. Good evening. Given that it's already so late, I'm going to. Can you?
I don't make any decisions.
I'll take a song. I know. Give her the voice that. Last summer, the county applied for a grant from the State Department of Water Resources shallow draft inlet from the dredge the outer bar of the Lockwood Folly inlet wider and deeper than it has been in the past. Their goal is to create a more durable channel and reduce the frequency and cost of dredgings. In addition, the project would take 250,000 cubic yards of sand from the inlet, you guys mentioned that earlier. The sand would be placed on either Oak Island or Holden Beach. The county did receive the grant. The total project is estimated at 4.1 million. The state will pay two-thirds. The county and the town receiving the sand will pay the remaining third, 1.4 million. And then the county is suggesting that the receiving town pays 75% of that, or 1.3 million. The IBPB, Illinois Beach Protection Board, held a special meeting December 7th to discuss deputy county manager Steve Stone's email requesting a response from the town by the first part of January. Now, it's in your packet. The ordinance establishing the IBPB asks the board to make recommendations on the feasibility and cost benefit of projects such as these, and our response is also in your packet. In order to save time, I'm going to skip what our concerns are, they're listed out on there, and just focus on our recommendations. The IBPB recommends that the town pursue this opportunity and that the sand be placed on the east end of Holden Beach, as indicated in the grant application. We feel this is especially important, as the town is missing out on this cycle of the Lockwood Folly crossing sand. We recommend that the town staff follow up with the county regarding comments in their email about the project being determined to be a success. How they define success. And we'd also like to make sure you understand that participation in a wider, deeper project should not be construed as supporting the sharing of sand from the outer bar with neighboring beaches. We recommend that the proposed cost-sharing arrangement also be discussed. In summary, the IBPB unanimously feels that if this project goes forward, it's essential that the sand come to Holden Beach. As a downed beach, we cannot afford for the dredging to occur without the sand coming to our beach.
Hold on.
So, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
David, don't you need them to?
Yes, the questions. What's needed, David?
Steve Stone wants to know by the beginning of January, before you meet again, so.
I intend to communicate what I'm assuming the board's position is in support of what the Beach Protection Board wanted to see Steve, and also to enter into some other dialogue with him along those lines.
Yeah, so I would support the four recommendations that are here on page 1 of them.
I would ask that we not limit our recommendations to them.
Madam McCann, first.
The last page in the packet is the proposed meeting schedule for next year. It reflects the third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 P.M.
I'll go first, I have no problem with any of those dates.
Any other comments? Is there a motion that we? Adopted? Adopted, yes. All right, John made the motion. A second. Just a second. Any discussion, Mike?
You're catching on at this point.
I was like, I agree. All in favor, say aye. All ahs. All ahs say aye. Janice? Ms. Yew?
Yes, sir. This month, we've got several personnel actions taking place. Number one on our list is that Chief Lane has officially announced his retirement effective the 1st of April, 2019. With that, Detective Dixon has been formally designated as the next chief of police for the town of Holden Beach, and will become, which will become effective upon the Chief Lane's last day. There will be an appropriate hail and farewell sequence of events as we initiate Jeremy properly through the spring, and I look forward to that process. Ava Kane, over in Building Inspections, has announced her retirement from the front desk there effective the 1st of January, filling that position with our former beach ranger, Maddie Zenmeller, on a temporary basis. Chief Lane spoke to fill in the vacant police department position last month, a couple, several weeks back. That position has been filled by Colton Robinson. He comes to us from the Brunswick County Sheriff's Department and is currently processing through the police department's field training program. And lastly, Megan Hegador has transitioned from her temporary status at the reception desk to regular full-time status. And I believe that this morning, we discussed, for those that weren't privy to that discussion about rollout, rollback service, Waste Industries does provide, on a by-request basis, rollout service, rollback service for special needs individuals, elderly and firm. Basically, from my discussions with them, you need to get a doctor's note to prove that you're, and that's for residents, the resident homeowners. Canal dredging in the canal subdivisions is well underway, got started last week, although the contractor is about two weeks behind where they want to be. They're working, again, they're working in the canals from east to west, that is Holden Beach Harbor, Heritage Harbor, Harbor Acres, and especially with the two weeks back up in the schedule, Holden Beach Harbor looks like they'll at least be in Holden Beach Harbor through the 25th of January, Heritage Harbor the 26th of January through February the 25th, and then Harbor Acres from the end of February through the first weekend of April. We have had occasion already where someone hasn't moved their boat out of the way, so if you don't have your boat out of the way, you need to make those arrangements as soon as you can, so as not to facilitate the project for everyone. The no-name storm of 2018 Thanksgiving, Chris Clemens probably waxed poetic on the description about what we experienced there, but suffice it to say that we had a significant tidal and stormwater flooding on several of the canal subdivision streets. That caused us a whole bunch of issues, including valve pit misfires, vacuum system pressure loss, and high vacuum pump temperatures due to increased native head pressures and extended run times. Of note there is that these circumstances are very similar to those that we see during a hurricane event, with one major difference. The island was populated and the system was on, and so, the issues that manifested themselves were primarily because of broken snorkels, loose cleanouts, things like that, in a system that is supposed to be closed. So, if there's water that's 18 inches deep on top of a broken cleanout, well, guess what? We're just sucking in stormwater and sending it across the ICW to be treated. Causes a whole bunch of issues. If this would have happened for a longer period of time, we do not think that we could have maintained our operations and kept it going.
Was that my three minutes? Shut up.
Yes, no.
Okay.
But we're fortunate that the flooding wasn't more widespread and after a while, the tide went out, you know, it coincided with a king tide and all the rain that we had. And also, there wasn't very many people here. No sewage spills occurred. That's a foot stonker there. Our lessons learned is that we've got a lot of entry points in that closed system and the two items with missing cleanouts and broken snorkels are probably the most readily apparent, although we believe that there are other points of entry into that system that we are working on an inspections protocol that'll allow us to ferret those types of things out and actually have some specialized equipment that's going to allow us to make those types of investigations. FEMA storms, we're still working three reimbursement programs simultaneously, still got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars outstanding with Perk and Matthew. Florence and Michael, our technical advisor, beach technical advisor, has met with the staff to gather the necessary information, the right of project worksheets for Florence, and then also to prepare the submittal for Hurricane Michael's federal declaration. And I noticed that day before yesterday, no, on the twelfth, that Governor Cooper has requested Hurricane Michael, a Hurricane Michael federal declaration for twenty-one North Carolina counties, including Brunswick County. So our input, we'd like to think, helped, helped the governor to make that request on our behalf. There is some additional surveying that's going to be required for strand losses. Those are underway in order to meet some new federal guidelines. And last but not least, we've had some cosmetic damage with the Newtown Hall gutters here and also at the Starfish Fire Station, the fascia down there, those aren't going to qualify for reimbursement, so we're evaluating our repair options. Primarily, the Starfish Fire Station, fascia being removed has revealed some rock down there that we haven't programmed into, so we're just evaluating what's the best way to fix that. But other than that, that's not a court for you on.
Any questions? Mayor's comments agreed. Compliment the staff for making a Merry Christmas event over at our Holden Beach Pavilion. I heard had a lot of positive comments about it. Took care of Grinch, who was a real problem trying to control the power supply. And isn't that right, Chris? That was a bad person that messed with a lot.
It was.
Had a lot on there. And overall, I think we're finishing up a good year, the condition of the island, in my observation. We've still got a lot of repairs going on from the storms. And most all of the contractors and repairmen are telling me that they're at least two months to six months out in catching up on all the repair work. So if you're going to do any work on your house, you better be speaking to somebody because when spring gets here, when the spring rush gets here, then everything's going to be fixed up some more. So a lot going on on the town, a lot of new construction, and I don't see anything slowing up in regards to that. So it's overall good, good condition from the town, as I said. So thank you all for participating in doing whatever you're doing, staff and neighbors and friends. So, Mr. Mike?
I'd just like to thank everyone who was here tonight, usual suspects, actually. And I'd like to thank the people who gave their input on solid waste, actually the most correspondence I think I've had on any item, including the terminal board, since I've been in the mission. So it was good to get the input beforehand rather than afterwards, make the decision. And other than that, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy new year.
Mr. Barrett?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We're actually finishing about an hour earlier than the last couple meetings, so I think this is a great success. Thanks for hanging in there with us all here and Merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Sure.
I'd also thank everybody for hanging in here this evening and Merry Christmas to you and to your families. Stay healthy and God bless.
John?
Also thank you everybody and anybody who found out that sent us information because I also was flooded with input, so we're all good inputs and we've got as many of them taken care of as we could. And I do wish everybody is safe and a happy holiday season and see you next year.
Peter?
I'd like to thank everybody for attending and your patience and I'd also like to wish you a Merry Christmas and happy new year.
Number twenty-seven, public comments. Anyone want to speak about anything? Raise your hand, be recognized. Come to the podium and speak into the microphone and smile and tell us what's on your mind. Anyone? Not seeing anyone is your emotion. Second, second. All in favor, say aye. And Shannon, it's first.